...for which stands one nation, one God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are a couple agenda additions. I think Sally has, what, two?
I have to, I just need the board's authorization to put a notice into the next water bill from the Shade Tree Commission, and I'd like to add the bills and claims I pulled off the table at the last meeting. I have a memo from Julie Robbins, who's the head of the DPA, saying that yes, they approved expending money for the bonfire. And Katie, I will give this to you so you can attach it.
Yes, ma'am.
This would be appropriate to move that I be able to consent agenda.
You want it to consent?
If that is, if that is approved.
Does everybody come to?
What, what's the notice out for the Shade Tree?
The Shade Tree sent out a year ago a notice saying the following: "The building department of the Village of New Paltz would like to remind residents that cutting, topping, or removal of any tree on public or private property within 20 feet of the edge of the curb or road pavement will require a permit from the Shade Tree Commission." Then it tells them to contact.
So this is just the same thing again?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
And we want to do it annually because we have a lot of people moving in and out of the community, and it's a nice way of letting them be made aware of the rules.
This goes out in the water bill?
Yeah.
Water bill, right.
Yeah, and the water bills go out in March, so I wanted to give Katie plenty of time to get it ready to insert.
Rock and roll.
Any objection? Okay. Sounds like, I guess we'll add that to the consent agenda then.
That goes down to Katie. I wrote a note to you that Kathy has what you need, and then you can follow her advice when Nancy tells you to get them done.
Okay.
So, Mark, would you like to publicly comment?
Oh, it's right now?
Right now, you can go first.
Do you approve the agenda?
Thank you. I'm Mark Sherman. Two things. One, I'll be very brief on the one, but I don't know how many of these meetings I'll be able to go to. As far as town-village consolidation, I just want to say one thing, which I won't believe. I really think, and it's not about money, I have no idea what's going to go on with the money. I think this is an incredible community, an incredible amount of creativity, an incredible amount of energy, and the one thing that we all have limited is our time. And whatever time you spend on one thing, you can't be spending on another. It appears that for all the years I've been here, a huge amount of time has been spent on town-village problems. Countless hours. And a lot of us waste time in our own personal lives and things like that. Why do that? Why? I just think there is a power in this community, which is already, we see it all the time, which would be beyond any of our imaginations, if that time is spent for all these years, I mean, many, many years, on these issues was no longer an issue. And I just can't help but think of how great that would be. You know, I'm in New Paltz, and I lived in the village, now I live in the town. It's just, to me, anyway, that's not the finances, it's just the feeling about people being able to do so much. But, anyway, I'll throw that, that's just a general thing.
And when were you on the town board?
I was on the town board a long time ago, 1988 to 1991. But, you know, my neighbor, who lives across the street, has been living in this community for about 55 or 60 years, and now he's in his late 80s. He just said to me, "What do you think about this town village thing?" And out of nowhere, even though he, you know, was keeping up with it. And he didn't play the show his hand, but I think he had a similar feeling to me that, you know, anyway, but I shouldn't speak for him, that's hearsay. I'm here, I saw the thing about parking, and, you know, I really have nothing particularly new to say. I know Arianna's on our transportation implementation committee. We did go over it one night, we were a little toward the end, a little rushed, but there was a lot of discussion of that, and I still hope that maybe nothing's done before that committee has a chance to say more. You know, I have some concerns, it's a long, a long thing here, and I don't know if you allow public input once you get discussing things, and if not, that's okay.
Depends on how interesting you are.
Pardon?
Depends on how interesting you are.
Thank you, I try. I've expressed before, my biggest concern for the moment, and again, there's a lot here, is the alternate side parking throughout the world. I, you know, I'd just be repeating myself, but I just think it already causes some issues on the bus. I mean, it used to be much easier to park for the bus, and now it's more difficult. But that's there, and it's hard to reverse things like that. But for Grove Street and for North Mannheim in particular, they're busy streets, and North Mannheim has a couple of businesses. It has the bank, and it has the shapers. And those have parking lots, and people, already, sometimes those overflow, not so much the bank, the shapers, and people start parking on the street. If it's open inside, people are going to probably start using the bank park. I can't imagine they won't start using the bank parking lot, it's right there, and that's not right in terms of the bank. They might even go and park there, which is filling, by the way, because I think people, I don't know why, but it's getting full, we can barely go in there. Grove Street, I've mentioned, the church is there, has a lot of functions, including meetings of groups like Narcotics Anonymous and AA, which is very important. These are people who really, may be familiar or have heard of this, very important in that people have access and don't feel discouraged about going. And people very often say, "Oh, it's hard, I can't park, why should I bother?" And people have gotten so used to that. I think people are, I hope you haven't heard from neighbors, you know, people making trouble. It's just an important thing for the community. And I just feel that with alternate sides, it's just going to really cause some difficulties. I really think so. You know, Grove Street with the buses, again, my wife took the bus into New York, then she came back. I don't know how far away she had to park, hopefully not too far, but that's a bit of a problem. But I think those other streets, and those are the ones I'm most familiar with, I just think could really be done. And, oh, and where St. Andrews is, I, you know, that's, I guess, I think there too, there could be issues. So I just think that could be some problems. And I know it's been discussed here, and Arianna and I wrote up at our meeting, about in terms of safety, cars tend to go maybe even more quickly when there's apartment on one side, and, you know, so this was.
You're not the first one, Mark, to raise this with us, and, you know, we just got to weigh all of the various things, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight.
Okay.
Because, you know, if you're looking at it from the DPW's standpoint, double-side parking is wreak havoc.
In terms of?
In terms of plowing and all of that. The real issue, and there may be a solution to it, is that the residents who do not have parking, say, can't park in front of their houses because other people are taking up all of the spaces.
Okay.
So, we're going to talk about that later on, and try and see if we can come to some kind of solution, because I understand what you're saying, and a lot of people have raised that with us, but, you know, it's sort of Solomon's weighing of the scales.
Yes. The thing about parking, though, with residents, if there's half as much parking, which is what alternate side does, essentially says there's now and then half as much.
No, but there are some future solutions that perhaps we might want to think about enacting now instead of waiting, and that is residential parking decals.
Okay.
So, we haven't talked among ourselves about all of these things that are feeding in, and what is the best way to go.
Okay, now I understand. I do hope, and this is true, everything can do with parking, whether or not public hearings are required. I assume, even if they're not required, a government, a municipality can have one. I'm assuming it's not against.
They are required.
Okay. I really hope with any of this stuff, even though obviously no, you know, I saw the agenda, Katie was very nice to say.
Some things, do you have the plan?
I do.
Okay. So the things that we're going to address tonight are the immediate. Those are the things that we can do now.
Right.
We might want to switch, like alternate street parking, if we think we're going to use residential decals, we may move that up to immediate, or we may move alternate street parking further out. So, everything we're doing, with the exception, I believe, of raising the amount in the meters on Main Street, we have to have public hearings on.
Okay.
And I also have the notes that I was planning on discussing tonight from the TIC meeting, where, you know, because obviously that's the group to give invite, you know, TIC Bicycle Protection Committee, with some, and there's some overlapping members, and Alan South was one of the people that spoke with me from both of those groups regarding the alternate side of the street parking in particular. So, you know, so all these things I feel like are really up for discussion, and TIC went over mostly the immediate things first.
The only thing, till tonight, Mark, the only thing the board has done is give concept approval for us to continue to explore, and tonight, hopefully, we will at least get a direction or an agreement.
Okay.
Okay, so we're very much in the, still in the stages.
No, I understand. You know, one thing, and before Arianna was there at the meeting that night, when I got a little emotional, which I'm much better than I used to be. Aging may have that.
It's being a grandparent.
Grandparent helps a lot, absolutely, it does. But I did say.
You know I didn't mind. You know I didn't mind.
No, you were great, you were amazing. No, you were great. But I found this a little hard to follow. For example, there was one that says, "This section is all 2013 budget", and then it says, "Immediate," which didn't seem like it was, you know, that you think about, "I want to start parking." So I found it kind of confusing, and I also suggested that along with this, if this starts to be made more public, which I think, I do think publicizing things is always ultimately for the best, some kind of map, because I sometimes found a little, in fact, there were a couple of things I think that Alan Bowder had noticed that were just off, it made wrong, you know, we all knew what was being discussed, but it happened to be.
It was not written well.
At East when it should have been West or something. So I think a map of some kind. Just to make it a little simpler, it's a long, it's a very long document.
I'm not redoing it.
Okay, 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 I'm a writer, I don't like to.
We will clarify very carefully, which or which.
But I guess all I'm saying is.
I don't think we have to redo it, I think we just have to.
That's fine.
Reorganize it, and that's.
All I'm saying is to just have, have people be, you know, be aware of it. I think it's the kind of thing that if it were, you know, in the newspapers with some regularity, people would notice, because it affects people, it affects a lot of people, especially people, New Paltz, this is a good thing. By the way, I'm not saying cars are great, I just don't know.
How to solve it.
Point in my life, the distance I live, the age I have reached, the weather being what it is, that's pretty much.
No, it is, it is a broad plan.
Yes.
But there are lots of nuances that need to be worked out. There are lots of things that need to be weighed in the best interest of the community.
Right.
In the best interest of DPW, in the best interest of, and we're going to try and weigh it all out and get some direction, or at least agreement on what we all think might be a solution.
Okay. And the plowing thing, I understand that, but keep in mind, of course, that's an issue just for several months of the year, and not, you know, not all the time.
Well, maybe that's the solution, alternate street parking in the winter. Who knows?
Or when it rains, it's snow. I mean, by the way, I know the rules on snow.
And it's totally the same.
If it was, I know. I mean, one time I found somebody at the park when I was going for the bus, because it was snowing, I understood that. And obviously, those, that makes a lot of sense, and I understand that. It's, anyway, thank, I just appreciate your hearing. I may not stick around too much longer, but I appreciate your hearing.
But, but please know that at any point, we're ready to have a hearing on part, or several sections that will be advertised on the website.
Okay.
Okay? And we will make sure it's in the paper, and the people know.
And hopefully not just as a, because those things in the back are the test of a lot of us to try to find.
I know, I know. Well, we're trying to.
No, I just think it's ultimately best, because otherwise, something happens, and you know what happens, people.
I know, I know.
What was that all about? Nobody's happy with that. Okay, thank you.
Your buck.
Thank you. Well, I move we approve the agenda.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any amendments by the board? All right, I move, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, wait minutes.
Those were in the consent agenda, yes?
I had, I had comments. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I withdraw my.
Can we just conclude them, get the changes, right?
Yeah. Won't we just let?
They were mostly just grammatical things or spelling things, like there's Kurt Wallace stated that the stopping, she maybe helped with a stop line, it's an at stop line. There was a number eight in the task cap override. I have to send this to your head right now. It's, it says FY201, and it's supposed to be 2012. Ad hoc is A D H O C, not A D D A G O C K. And then the second one, it was misspelled as at hic. And the line before that said, it said it, and it should be if. And the resolution of thanks, it's professionals who provided the board amendment. So I'll just send this up to you.
That would be long, I'd be happy to change it.
So as amended?
And I amended it earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just throw it through spell check.
Okay.
Things like it and if, you know.
So, do you need, do you want us to motion to add your amendments, Arianna?
Yes, please.
Okay, so move.
Second, and I guess we're still back to the board on the consent agenda as amended? No.
Aye?
Aye?
Aye.
We all know where we need to go.
Now, everybody understands that we approved the bills and claims and the tree notice. Okay.
All right, so.
And I gave both of those to you, right?
Yes.
Sally, you had requested the emails about the sidewalks?
No, I just sent it because I didn't know what we wanted to.
Yeah, you asked for it to be on the agenda, though, this was.
Yeah. We got, and this is not a new discussion.
Far from.
Okay. We got, there's a whole string of emails about snow plowing and sidewalks, and some of them are for people in the village. It was sent to the town, but I.
Many more emails even than this one regarding this issue. It was a big topic of discussion at our bicycle pedestrian committee meeting. And I guess this was everyone got this from Kurt with the photos.
Yes. We just, we just got that.
Yeah, and, well, I, I've gotten it because of this with the bike tent committee. And one of the things that, I mean, and Alan actually sent me a note because I told him we were going to discuss this. And I said that I think the best solution, and maybe not right now the best solution, but in general, I asked her in terms of overtime and how much is put into this in terms of cost, it seems like it would really be more cost-effective for us to include in this year's budget sidewalk snowing as well. And just have it done by the DPW. Kurt said he didn't realize that we have a, I don't even know what the vehicle is, but it's like a ride-on that has a smaller plow that can be attached to the front of it, that can easily be used for sidewalks.
A buck cab or something?
Yeah, something like that. I don't know exactly what the vehicle is.
Well, now, you recall, Jason recommended that as a possibility for us to think of last year.
Yeah.
And we did not do it.
I know. And so I'm advocating for that this year. I don't know if everyone saw my list of budget items, but that was one of them. And in terms of how long it takes, you know, in terms of like village employees' time being spent going out there and checking to see if people are in compliance, it seems like we could just spend the same amount of time actually clearing the sidewalks instead of, you know, either doing so, measuring it, and then filming people, or writing files to people and getting them to comply. I think it would be just more cost-effective to do it ourselves. It would have to be done after the plowing of the streets, but if any of it is in mind, I would read Alan's email, it was pretty short. He was, he's unable to attend, he's not feeling well, but he strongly supports the effort to have the village take over the responsibility for clearing sidewalks of ice and snow. And he goes on to say, "Do we require property owners to plow the streets in front of their homes? Of course not. Can you imagine that scenario? Three blocks clear, then one block snow-covered, two blocks clear with one more snowed in? That's how pedestrians often navigate our sidewalks. Can you imagine trying to do that in a wheelchair? Or if you're pushing a shulter and you were a parent? When you have hundreds of people responsible for the sidewalks, you naturally have some slatters. This causes a huge burden on the building department trying to enforce the law, and still, our sidewalks are impassable at best and often dangerous. New Paltz strives to be a pedestrian-friendly community. Clearing the sidewalks of ice and snow is a legitimate and necessary function of the village government." I mean, I think that, you know, that doesn't stop the problem this season, but is something that we should, I mean, nobody is opposed to doing that. We should include it in the budget.
I was going to knock part of this over to CI, to the Transportation Committee, because a lot of Kurt's pictures, and one of the emails is on Main Street, which is 299, and that is a state responsibility.
Right.
The emails that I've gotten are from people who live and are part of it. I'm not going to blame DPW on this, because if you have a sidewalk with a grass and then the curb, you don't have a problem, because the snow, this plow goes onto the grass.
That grassy part, right.
If you.
Like right here at my house, right?
On this side.
For example, yeah.
But my side of Flatakil, there is no. It's curb sidewalk immediate, and as they come down, it goes right up.
Right up, yeah.
And right on, and even if you've cleared it.
Yeah.
You have a problem.
I saw Kim clearing his for the second or third time. He said that they had done it, and the snow got pushed back up. I think it's on South Side Avenue, and so, yeah, that's exactly what happened.
So, I don't, it's such a dilemma, and I don't know what, I guess I would love to see a cost breakdown. Is this possible? A cost breakdown?
Yeah, if you want to sit down and blue, I mean, because the other, think about the other thing, too, is, is staff resources, because if we have X people going out and plowing, and we have them out until six in the morning, you know, people exhausted, we can't have them come up first thing the next morning to get into the bucket since they're on two hours' sleep, you know, so it maybe have to stagger, or, you know, there may be staffing considerations.
I'm sure that there would be, yeah.
Well, one question I was asked, and I have no idea, if the plows went more slowly, instead of, at whatever speed they go, would that lessen the amount thrown up?
It's the curve of the blade, it pushes the snow.
So it doesn't matter how fast you go?
I mean, maybe, some.
Well, yeah, but if you don't go fast enough, it doesn't work very well either.
That's the other problem.
But, you know, and there are certain problems, because, I think initially, I've, my initial thought was that we have summer help, it's, why don't we just get winter help? If the DPW is too exhausted from plowing the streets, we have people that we hire for storms come out and load the bucket.
They're using these commercial driver licenses, or, you know.
Yeah, a special operator.
Whatever exactly is called.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we're going to pay them more than we hire the high school kids, because maybe they'll be, they'll be more skilled, but, you know, guys might want to, you know, a little extra money, you know, the kind of guys who would take their own plow out and go do people's driveways, maybe have a CDO for work and rather pick up some extra bucks doing the sidewalks instead. Just, just to keep in mind, if it ends up being a crunch between plowing and sidewalks, we shouldn't have to make the choice, you know.
Well, I think obviously Lou is personally.
I think we need a real cost breakdown.
Yeah.
Of what it would cost, the insurance involved, because you'd have additional liability insurance. Do we have the equipment to do it with, and if not, how much that would cost?
Right. I mean, we definitely have one, one of the types of pieces of equipment according to what Kurt said.
Well, you could probably put a plow on the mower.
Right.
The ride-on mower.
I mean, I don't know if that's, if that's what, because whatever vehicle is, the plow is something that attaches onto it, it's not a part of it. Well, just from what Kurt said, I would actually see this myself.
And I guess it's time to see it. And how long does it take for the plow to execute sidewalk, times the number two, two side of the canyon? That, I mean, that's pretty easy to find out, you know, how many dollars per hour of labor.
You might not be, have to do sidewalks that have a grass.
Right.
A grass thing in between, or grass that the snow goes up on.
Or it's just a good public service to have all the sidewalks publicly cleared.
Yeah.
You know? Because we may have a foot of snow on a sidewalk that, you know, that still needs to be shovelled by somebody, you know, maybe it's not the, the snow from the street, but if we get a big storm, you know.
But one of the real problems of having lived along Main Street for a long time, where there's no distance between Main Street and sidewalk, is that you can clear that off several times, and the state has the big equipment, and that comes in, you know, deposit all this ice right on your sidewalk, and even if you clear it off within the time you're supposed to, you're going to have to do that several times. So if you're going to try and figure out if the village is going to do that, what that's going to cost, it's not going to happen once for those kind of places, it's going to happen maybe five times.
Really, because of the storm?
Yeah, because, because they'll, they'll just keep coming from the state, which is good for Main Street, but it's tough on the sidewalk.
Well, that's why I want to put it as an issue with transportation to talk to Tom Wiener about, because there may be a solution. Me, they don't worry about the handicapped ramps that, you know, people have to be able to cross the street. I mean, I've gone down and they're just.
Huge piles of snow on every corner.
Very piled high, so how do you expect?
If you're on the sidewalk or you're in the street, you can't walk from one to the other.
And that's what, you know, they're concerned about. Now, the town part, we can't do anything about. I'm just concerned about what we think is the solution within the village. And, you know, I mean, Jason's right, maybe we should just approach it, all sidewalks on all streets, and see what it would cost out to do it.
I think that's what we should do.
I think you're going to find that's a big number.
Yeah, I think.
Especially as Jason said, when you think of lemon.
Thank you.
Good night, Mark.
Say it up all night, you know, you're going to have to have different groups of people, or else wait a period of time, which won't work, because then the ice, I mean, the critical areas where the state plows and that, that kind of thing are different. Because if you have the side streets with a little median in between, then once the plows go through, then you blow gold on except for your driveway. What do we do now about the fire plugs?
You're responsible to dig out your own.
So if that's the case.
If you have a fire plug.
You could make it, you could make, you could make, it's an old-fashioned, you can make the same thing for the handicap entries to the street, too. Do it for the fire plug.
No, I'm responsible as a property owner, if I have a hydrant on my property, to dig it out.
What about if you have a handicap, right, at the corner, your problem?
That's your responsibility.
That's part of the shoveling.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that's the same issue, so that's how you handle it.
We could just get radiant heating on all the sidewalks.
Did she burn?
It'd be nice. At least we walk around barefoot in the winter.
I just don't think we can run around differentiating, oh, this person has, you know, grass between the sidewalk and the curb.
I think we're all on the same page with that.
Yeah, we're, we're just going to have.
It'd be a matter of taking on, it'd be the public taking on responsibility for public sidewalks. Same, the same way we subsidize auto travel by paving and plowing the streets, we're going to subsidize pedestrian by clearing the sidewalks.
Yeah.
We care for our sidewalks the way we care for the streets.
Exactly. I don't know why cars are catered to in the way that pedestrians do not.
Well, we don't, we're going to kill each other when we walk into each other on the sidewalk, like, have something to do with it.
Well, I think also, it's, it's a lot easier.
Only for ourselves.
It's a lot easier to shovel your sidewalk than it is to shovel the whole road.
And pave it.
Well, paving as well, but, you know, like, plowing, you drive a giant plow down the street, it plows it off. I think that, like Stuart said, we probably would see a really large number if we dedicated ourselves to doing all the sidewalks. And we do have a lot of people out there who are interested, or not interested, but will shovel their stuff. So maybe the solution would be that we plow, you have X number of hours to shovel, and if not, the DPW drives around and just shovels, and then you get hit with a bill. Because, you know, I feel like.
Well, that's what we do now.
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, I think it is, but then we have, we're sending Kathy around first to go inspect everything, and then we're sending everything out, then we're sending the DPW out.
What you were saying just then.
No, I, well, we started this winter, because it used to just be on a case-by-case basis, but I changed it when we had a long weekend in a snowstorm, I think. But now it's, because the law says that you have to have your driveway shoveled, or, I mean, sidewalk shoveled 24, 24 hours after the snow stops.
Okay.
Right.
So when the snow stops, I just told Kathy, "I don't care if it's Sunday or Monday, we're out enforcing it."
Right.
And go out and inspect.
Right, we have to be there all the time.
Right. So she goes out 24 hours after the snow is done, which means the plow has a long stop.
Right.
So the problem, part of the problem is that people. So, the problem, part of the problem is that people wanna shovel before then, for one thing. Cause they wanna go walk around, and that just gets frustrating. So the DPW doesn't actually go around and check at all. Kathy goes around and just goes to the troubling spots that she knows.
Right.
I was told.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is maybe instead of going through the step of getting Kathy out there and then sending someone out. The DPW plows, give people time to shovel, and then the DPW goes out and just shovels anything that's in the way.
Oh, you just cut Kathy out of it.
Right, if you haven't shoveled, we're gonna come shovel your stuff within X number of hours, and you'll get a bill. Because I really do think that considering.
The biggest thing is that Kathy's taking measurements and photographs, and that's what people are being billed based on.
Right.
Is how much.
And I think she also has to decide them, doesn't she?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, see, we can't.
I think, actually, I don't know, she might just be able to, to have it done.
I mean, we change, I have an idea to changing our code to say, you know, you don't get a warning about snow shoveling. You just, you do it at, or we do it, and then you get a, you get.
And it costs you X number of dollars.
Exactly. And, and we could have it be more of a flat fee where, I mean, I certainly, I, I think, I mean, there was one time that at my old house, we did not shovel in time, and it was like a hundred and seventy-nine dollars for this one snowstorm. I mean, they just took it out of our security, the landlord paid it, but it was our responsibility to shovel, and it was only one time he did it. But that's enough money to make people wanna do it. If you increase that to a flat fee, that could be more incentive. But, I mean, I really, I really am in favor, and I, you know, I'd like to see what that number is. Maybe if it was really that extraordinary, I would be less in favor of doing it. But to me, I, I don't feel like there's really a cost cap on us doing the sidewalks.
Well, the, the budget, the term of the budget has to be passed by March twentieth, the final one by the end of.
And you have a two percent property cut, don't you?
Well, that, we, that, let's, we didn't worry about that yet until we see the number anyway.
Right.
But just in terms of being able to get a number for us to pass solid enough that we can put it in the budget for this winter. Is that something you think you could have done by, you know, in the next week or two with Blue? Yeah.
I mean, it really depends on whether or not Blue thinks that we can have that done. Because I'm not gonna be able to figure that out on my own. He's gonna have to.
I think, I think it would be better if you get it from Blue.
Well, I honestly, this is, if, if this is what, you know, RM is bringing up, she, I mean, I don't see.
I mean, you suggested a number of times that you have a budget officer, but I will do it if you are requesting that of me.
I am, because you'll be able, you've thought it through more than I have. So you'll be able to explain to Blue more precisely what it is we need.
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Will it, will the cost depend on, you know, how much snow there is? I mean, are you gonna send somebody out if we do this for two inches of snow, or only if it's over a foot, or?
Five hundred dollars.
I guess it maybe depend on when we send out the plows. We can, if we, every time we run a plow, you assume we're running a sidewalk, plow too. So then we budget the same way we budget for right now.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to think that, um, for the most part, you ought to have the, the citizens do it. Now, maybe if they don't do it, we don't go through a big procedure, we just do it. So we give them enough time.
Right.
Um, but I don't think we should cut them out completely. Just we'll go do it on the sidewalk and hate for that. I, I, you know, somehow that seems wasteful to me.
Well, let's see how much it costs and then we.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm afraid to give that number.
And it, it really is going to be a very difficult budgetary item to pin down based on the number of snowstorms.
Exactly.
It'll all be like the plow budget, you know, one year, we use it all, and then some in another year, you know, we don't use it at all.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess that's, it is what it is, but.
I mean, those are always high, cause if you're conservative.
Right, yeah, I guess you could estimate, you know, if, if you could find the estimate of one snowstorm, like one, like, you know, six inches or a foot. Yeah, one plow run, basically. Um, that would be the way to go, but, you know.
But four inch, three inches of snow plow isn't really gonna rack up a sidewalk.
Do, do, do like a, a three inch, a six inch, and a foot, or some, something like that, you know, put one run.
You'd have to have different, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I, I really.
It takes longer to shovel.
I think realistically, we have, we have a ton of free labor that we would be pushing out for.
Community service. Have people out to shovel, is what I'm looking.
Yeah, I get.
I think should they can, and, I don't know.
Yeah, but you don't know whether there's gonna be anybody.
I didn't mean like that, I meant like people, you know, people go out and.
They haven't been that quick to wanna do that.
Right.
I mean, cause the CIT want them to assign people to, to help, you know, clean up some things, and they've been kinda reluctant to do that. And I'm sure they have their reasons, but it's.
No, I, yeah.
I mean, we've reached out to campus groups who philanthropy is required of them about doing snow shoveling. And there've been, reset, they, there, some years people have been receptive, other years not.
Right.
Um, in the last couple of years, if the answer has been no.
I think we can't get into that. I think we're gonna have to just look at it.
Right.
It, do we regard this as a municipal service for which we will tax? Or not, and get the figures for three inches, six inches, and twelve inches, and go from there?
Yeah. I would say likely, I, you know, I guess I would have to see the numbers, but I can't imagine that if, you know, everyone's already out there shoveling for the most part, and there's a few bad seeds, I wouldn't wanna just, you know, spend all that money.
Or people who can't shovel.
Well, the, well, that, yeah, that's, that's a different situation, and like, you know, maybe that could be something where we can find some sort of volunteer effort, or, you know, find a way to pay for it or something. That I'm in favor of, if you wanna, you know, have a list of people who aren't able to do that, and then maybe we can set something up. Cool. Um, but.
Usually, you know, people hire people to do it if they don't.
Well, that's what I was.
But there's that, that's that as well.
A list.
Go out and shovel snow and this, that, well, maybe five months.
Oh, yeah, five, that's eight.
But Stuart, not.
I was.
I know.
I was making like hundred fifty bucks.
Our own experience, I mean, sometimes young people are out knocking on doors.
Yeah.
I like Brian's idea of keeping a list of students or whoever are, who are willing to shovel. And then if someone called, you could say, call.
Oh, well, I was gonna say a list of houses that may need it, and if someone's interested.
Yeah.
You know, we, we can provide that.
Send them to that person.
Right.
Go get the drugs.
Like you could sign up for a list to say, I would like my.
No, I, I think that.
You want the shovellers, not the shovelies.
I want the shovellers, and if somebody calls and says, I need help shoveling. You could give them the name and telephone number of two, three people.
Sure.
And that's that.
Yeah.
I think that would be better.
Right.
In other words, you know, sort of a resource.
Right.
Referral system would be easier than trying to maintain, because someone could break their leg and not be on the list.
Sure.
So, it would be better if, if we're gonna go that route, to have a list of people who are willing to go out and shovel.
Yeah.
And then people can call and get a name. Amy, where else would we on this?
I think, sounds like we're gonna wait to see what the numbers are and consider if we'll just flush it.
Are you gonna include Main Street?
And, and what?
You gonna include Main Street?
It'll be all the sidewalks.
All the sidewalks.
All the sidewalks.
Okay.
Alright, so.
And that's where we are with that.
Um.
You wanna do parking?
Yeah, well, let's just go down this parking plan, and then, and then they take us.
And then Joe should be here. Okay. Alright, the parking plan. Just so everybody knows, Joe has put into the legal format that which we need once we decide what we're doing. So what I would like to do is just go damn through, okay? And talk about each of these items and just decide, basically, if we can, what we wanna do. Now, on the meters, we had talked about raising the cost of all the core meters to fifty cents per thirty minutes. That we do not, as I understand it, have to have a law amendment that we can just do. If the board thinks that is a good idea.
I, I have a question. Joe's, Joe, at the last, last time he was here, when we talked about this, he said he would get, get us a list of what did require laws and what did not, by the following one day.
I thought he sent it to you.
I know about that.
Okay. But that's not real, what is more important for us right now, cause then you and I can get together and figure this out.
Okay.
Is, you know, if we, if people really don't wanna have alternate street parking area, there's no point in rendering that and having a hearing on it.
Oh, right, of course.
So what I wanna do is just, it, it's okay with you, just review the things now. Okay, so we got, we're gonna retain all the meters in the core business area, and everybody understands what those are, okay? So, we want then to raise the cost of all the core business area meters to fifty cents per thirty minutes. With a maximum of sixty minutes, okay, which will allow people to do their shopping, run their errands, and yet have a turnover, so that people are not using the meters for long-term parking.
The TIC thought it was unrealistic to reduce the, the spot to two hours. Hello, Jeff.
Hey, guys.
The CIT thought what?
The CIT thought it was unrealistic to reduce the two-hour spot to one-hour spot. And they were speaking specifically in terms of, you know, like, you're going out to lunch, or getting something to eat.
That's then they should be using the municipal parking lot. They shouldn't be using street meters. We talked about that.
Okay. What about by the bakery? What about on North Front Street?
North Front Street, if, if that's core business, and it is, I think, if you wanna make it fifty cents per thirty minutes with a maximum of a hundred and twenty minutes, that's fine with me. But I think the meters have to be raised to fifty cents per thirty minutes.
They have no problem with raising the price. They, their issue is with reducing the maximum of how long people.
How's everybody feel?
And, and I mean, I don't, I'm just stating what they said and, you know. Saving the fees.
I don't care if, if we keep it at a hundred and twenty minutes.
Well, I agree, I agree at, look, to lowering it actually, to, to suggest it, because one of the things that we, that was weird in the, the transportation study was that what we realized is we actually don't really have a parking problem, we have a perception of a parking problem. Cause when we mapped out and counted the spots at different times of day, there was always a place, there was a, a, a reasonable percentage of a chance of get it even at the rush hour, except for like two or three times a week. So, one of the things that we, I think Bob Chablin started talking about is how short, how long it seems to take to walk from like Grove down to P and G's, but if you time it, you know, fifteen seconds. So having a, a short time in the, in the, in the core of the village, I think, I agree with the, the premise that that will force you to walk one extra block, and let spread out the parking a little bit, so it maybe doesn't get congested. Did that kinda thing come up with the TIC? That, that argument?
No, we, we talked about it philosophically and felt that sixty minutes was good because that would allow people to go shopping, not lunch necessarily, but shopping. If you had to run into Manny's, or you had to run in here, do your errands. And then you move your car, and someone else can come in and do theirs. And that this would just be the core area, and if people wanted longer parking, they should be parking in the municipal lot. And that was our thing.
It makes sense that the turnover downtown, rather than someone have to walk two blocks throughout ten-second shopping tour.
So, it's whatever you all want.
I mean, I'm pretty open.
Hmm?
I'm pretty open in terms of.
Keep it the way we have it.
And keeping it as is.
Alright. So that is something we could do next week at our meeting.
Is it a resolution?
Hmm?
We just need a resolution?
We just need a resolution next week.
Um, I guess, I mean, if there's a lot of, you know, if, if the TIC is right and it, and they, and they're thought that it's unrealistic to do that on a place like North Front Street. To me, would be.
Well, the CIT is basically a town with a few representatives from the village. And I think this is a village decision.
What about the DVA? Do they?
They, they were in on it.
They were part of it.
I forgot about that, yes.
Julie and Amy were all part of this plan.
As the DVA is behind it, and I'm even more content with that.
I feel like this is something that we should not just do. We should have the, we should notify the public and have them, have a, have a public hearing on it.
You don't need a public hearing on this one.
Why not?
But we should have.
But I'm thinking that, you know, if we're gonna be changing the meter times and, you know, adding rates. It seems like some people are gonna have something to say about that. You know, I, I know I heard a lot of voices from the bakery section of town. They had some issues with it. You know.
Well, part of the thinking was the turnover.
Mm-hmm.
I think the Downtown Business Association has a very good handle on some of the stuff that's going on.
Mm-hmm.
And the other problem that we seem to be having, which we're gonna solve in a different way, are shop employees who are using the meters.
Right.
Okay, and so for all of those reasons, that is why we recommend, are recommending
Right.
raising the rate and limiting the time.
Right.
Now, the meters right now are an hour.
Right.
Okay, so that's not really the question. The question is to raise it up.
I don't think anybody's questioning the price.
Okay.
So the point of raising it is that people who are using the parking meters all day will not be paying even more to do so. And that will convince them, that'll convince them to go to the municipal parking lots, which are cheaper.
We know, we're hoping to have the long-term parking lot, that's coming up for discussion.
And what's, and is that gonna be the same price, or is that?
No, no, that's by permit, per month, or you get a six-month permit.
And, and I don't know if, um, like, I know we had representative, representation from the DVA. But I don't know if everybody in the DVA saw it, and, you know, maybe we didn't get like comments from them. So I don't know if that's, I don't know, I just like Brian's idea of bringing this to the public and having it not be a surprise. Because I think that people just.
Right.
Really like that when we, regardless of what we have.
Well, I don't think it should be a public hearing for sure, cause it's not a public hearing. And.
A public comment period where we're saying, this is what we would like you to come comment on, and maybe it's this and a handful of other things that we're gonna do in the immediate that don't require law.
Well, a, a public.
Just so we could.
You can have a public hearing without a law.
Yeah. You can have a public meeting.
Could have a public.
For the purposes of.
You can call it a public hearing.
But I would call it, that confuses people, they'll think.
That they're hearing things?
I think it's an, an information session.
I, I mean, I think you could call, it, it doesn't change its legal efficacy if you call it a public hearing.
Right.
Um, but, but you can call it anything you want.
Right, you can call it anything you want. And we are gonna have to have public hearings on a lot of these parking things, so that's why I don't wanna confuse people as to.
Do you know what it costs, um, to change all the meters? Is that a big deal?
It, it actually is, is kind of a big deal.
How big of a deal is it? Eight, eight hundred dollars about?
A meter?
DPW will do it.
No.
For the actual, it's a couple hundred dollars per, maybe two hundred per?
Per meter?
Yeah.
To change it?
To buy one.
Oh, to buy one.
Buy one.
Change, change for an hour.
Oh, fifty cents, install a new one.
Fifty cents, twenty-five cents.
Oh, no, you have to do to.
What I'm talking about, that takes time, and this is what Nick and Blue said to us. Um, in terms of like, they need to take off the stickers that are currently on there, and change the pricing on it, and put on new stickers. And then the meter companies, which apparently we have two different ones that we're contracted with. They come and change the programming of it, which I don't know what that costs.
Well, that, that is probably covered under their maintenance contract.
Probably, and definitely a few different things.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that would be a maintenance contract that we pay. How much? A lot of money.
They didn't say anything to us about how much that would cost though. Um, they, they just talked to us about timing.
Right.
We certainly ought to get the answer to that question, if somebody might ask.
I think they already did.
Right now?
Alright, people, what do you wanna do? It's precision time.
Okay, so, uh, something else to think about, I'm just thinking about who are the people using cars in the downtown area? Or who are more likely to use cars in the downtown area?
People who live out in the town coming in.
True. Um, do you think it's people who are extremely able-bodied and mobile, or you think it's people who might be
Well, we have handicap parking supposedly, that and that has not been done yet.
No, I saw one, at least. I saw one of them go in. A handicap spot, there's a new one.
We've designated those spots.
But I'm just thinking is, you know, uh, uh, you might assume, or you might make the assumption that a person who is less able to walk from Grove Street down to Main Street would use their car, you know, you're, you're less able-bodied, you would use your car, go park in the downtown area. That person may also financially have less money, is, is that something to consider and thinking about that?
If you're driving a car and you're able-bodied and you don't feel like driving from Grove Street down to Main Street, I think you can pay the extra.
I agree. But what about the people who are the opposite of that?
But they're gonna be handicap parking spaces.
There might be four.
Is that free handicap parking? My, my, my point is that we're now, you know, we're increasing the rates on it and it just, it's a costly thing for people who may not, you know, I don't know. You know, do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I also understand that there is a limited amount that you can ask people to pay taxes on. Okay, and I think if we can generate, because I don't think most people who live within the downtown core use their car and park on Main Street. At least the ones I know of don't. They walk. So it, in, in a way, it is to encourage walking. By, if you know you can get, you know, quarters, nothing. But fifty cents might encourage you to walk more.
Or it might encourage me not to go downtown, go up into the Saffin Shop Plaza. Get a bagel up there instead of the bakery.
Maybe, but then you have to pay for the gas. I mean, I don't wanna, you know.
No, you're right, I, I know, I know, I know it's like, it's semantics, but at the same time, it's like, you know, I, I don't know. These are just the thoughts that come into my mind, I'm just.
Well, you can only park there for an hour at a time, so it means it's an extra quarter.
Right. Well, that should make sense, right, I mean, yeah, if I, like, you know, if I stop in, like, I think about like the times, like, okay, I'm rushing out to work, breeze by the bakery, drop in a dime, go stand online real quick, grab my stuff and go.
That was really ominous, son.
What is, what is that?
He just said a dime.
A dime won't help you, yeah, I know.
He hasn't parked down there in a while. We'll forgive him.
What do you mean, they?
Yeah, it's not a dime.
You can put a dime in the machines.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it gives you like, it gives you like fifteen cents or something like that, yeah.
It's a quarter.
No.
You don't have to only use quarters.
Yeah.
You can use dimes and nickels.
Oh, oh, dimes and nickels, okay. But, I.
You don't have to put a full quarter in, is what I'm saying, you can put in five cents and have like ten minutes. So, you know, in, like, that, as opposed to me having to go drop fifty cents into the machine to go get a bagel, I, I might say like, eh, I know, I know it's like a little bit of money, but at the same time.
Well, why can't he still just put a dime in?
I don't know, can't I? It's fifty cents for a half an hour.
You can just get fewer minutes for a dime.
Yeah.
You just get fewer minutes for a dime.
That's interesting too, people might just manipulate it that way if you allow that.
No, you, you can.
But I guess it still serves the same purpose, because theoretically they get, they get out of that space in a sooner or later time.
You can get ten minutes for ten cents, you get five minutes for ten cents. There's a maximum time they can.
Where are, because we're not getting very far very fast. Who's in favor of raising it to fifty cents for an hour? I take care of that.
There's twenty-two minutes we'll never get back.
You can fill my meter.
So, before you go on, let's, the, cause this is long and there's a lot here. What is it, what is it you wanna get done tonight? You wanna go through the whole thing, you wanna go through the intermediate?
I just wanna go through the immediate ones.
Just to speak, yeah, just wanna clear about that, alright, so now down to Sunday.
Yeah, I just wanna, do we, what did the transportation committee say about taking out the three meters? On.
We didn't get to, uh, you skipped over the, the metering on Sundays.
I wanna see, I wanna find out if I'm gonna have three meters.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did that wrong.
I'm trading meters at the moment.
Three meters on North and South Chestnut?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's in the transportation implementation plan.
Okay, so, I can use three of those meters to re, to put on the south side of Academy Street, which needs to be metered.
Okay, so my question is too, if we're taking those meters out on the North and South Chestnut, am I right on that? Can we remove those spaces?
Yes.
We can't remove spaces on Main Street because it's DOT.
DOT, this is DOT approved. The, the, three meters on North Chestnut and the three meters on South Chestnut.
Is it approved because it's in the transportation implementation study?
In, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
And so you're going to make a longer feeder.
So the DOT has already approved removing those spots?
Yes.
And they're gonna do it.
Yeah, under Terry Duncan.
Have to write a, because what they, what we were told is that we have to have a law written because of every, every parking lot.
That's gonna be part of the law.
Okay, is it our code?
Yeah, it's gonna have, that's a code adjustment Joe has already made, should we approve it. Okay, so, we're gonna keep our meters and we're going to take the three meters, three of the meters we're removing, and we're going to install them on Academy Street in the south side.
Just one, one question, that's not the meters that the people came down to complain about?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, we oughta, everyone oughta remember that.
Yes, it'll be part of the hearing.
Alright. That there will be people who have a contrary opinion about that.
And those people do not use the parking that they have provided in the back. Okay, and nor do they feed the meters.
Taking a position and I'm just saying.
I'm just telling you.
We have people talking about.
Okay. Um, now, we're gonna jump and the, the, the Sunday meter parking, we'll talk about. Whether you wanna do that.
Whatever you want, I mean, this is your, yours, I'm gonna show it, isn't it?
Alright, so, turn the page. Okay. Now, we talked about the handicap parking that was done, the church street was done already. Okay, and the need for, you know, on Main Street and Kathy and Blue were supposed to designate the spots.
Like you know, that's what in the meeting.
Okay, and we've done the next one. Um, now, another thing that came with the transportation recommendations was that first meter at, on the west side of North Front Street, when you come out of church, the visibility is very, very bad there. And it's the recommendation of the transportation committee ages ago that we take that first meter out altogether, so the people coming out to turn left to go down North Front Street can see. Okay, right by, in front of the Japanese restaurant.
Yes, yes, I'm sure.
Okay.
When, when you're going down to the street.
Going north.
No, when you're going down North Front Street, the parking meter.
Right by Hokkaido.
Hokkaido?
Yes, okay.
That we're going to remove. Okay? Okay, we already did bag the meters this year and I think that should become a a practice. Okay.
The maintenance of the sidewalk, sidewalks keeping them weeded and free of litter is the owner's responsibility. Failure to do so is fineable.
Pardon?
I'm just reading the thing about, um, sidewalks being the property owners.
We're not on sidewalks.
Wasn't that right after?
I just wanna go back to.
I'm sorry, I skipped ahead, you're right.
It says on the, on the plan, the southwest corner, but it's the southeast corner.
Is it the southeast?
Yeah, the southeast corner is what's in front of Hokkaido.
Okay.
So is, is the draft correct?
That is not the east side.
East?
No. It is the west side, as you're going down.
If it's the west, if you're, if you were coming out, if you drove down Church Street, like you're talking about driving, driving on Church.
Then it would be the southwest immediate meter on North Front.
But then that's not in front of Hokkaido, that's in front of the Pilates place.
No, no.
Yes.
North is, north is north.
North Front.
East is away from the map.
Okay?
Heading towards Highland, not towards the map.
Right, North Front. This meter over here, as you come out of Church Street from the synagogue and turn west. That meter, and that's in front of Hokkaido. Not their door, but that buil, that building. Please believe me.
I mean, this is what TIC said to me, it's the southeast corner, not the southwest corner.
The TIC, I believe is wrong.
So I, I think we should just specify in front of Hokkaido.
I'm just gonna pull it up on the old maps real quick.
Good, thank you.
We can discuss this briefly.
And I think that's why, that's in terms of what Monica's saying, in terms of having the maps of this, that's where.
Church Street, Hokkaido.
Right.
North Front Street.
Right.
What are we thinking, which corner, there?
Right there.
That would be southwest.
Church, this is Church Street here, coming in. This is the parking space we're talking about, right there, on North Front.
So here, this corner?
Yeah.
Southeast.
Yeah, because that way is the mountains and that's west, this way is east.
Kipsi, east. Elting Library.
Not on the Elting side.
I'm saying, so here's Elting Library.
Yep.
So the opposite side is the west side of North Front Street, and we're talking about this side?
Yep, at the intersection of Church and Front.
Southwest.
Southwest. That's what I thought.
Which, which side though?
Okay.
On North Front Street or on Church Street?
It's on North Front Street we're taking it, well.
Okay.
That first meter there.
First meter, Hokkaido side of the road.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Alright, now.
Now.
Now that we've gotten that one done. Okay. Um, now, all meters in core business, we did that. All other meters, except long-term meters designated in this proposal should be configured at fifty cents per hour with a maximum of four hours. So that would be anything not.
Either core business.
Okay?
Sure, whatever you guys want.
We, I don't wanna have this discussion again, so.
Oh, I'm gonna discuss it, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it.
No, no, what, do we agree to this?
Uh, you guys can agree, but I don't know how I feel about raising the meters, but it seems like everyone else is in favor of it, so.
All other meters, except long-term, fifty cents an hour with a max of four, do we agree?
I think it's too low.
Five dollars a minute.
You wanna really just, you wanna really decon, uh, increase pedestrian and bicycle access? Make parking your car really expensive and a priority? But fifty cents also.
We're trying to be good, okay, um.
Yes.
Okay, now, we have here, property owners must be informed and educated, perhaps by notice, not in this quarterly water bill, cause we're doing trees, that maintenance of sidewalks keeping them weeded and free of litter is the owner's responsibility. A lot of people don't know that. And so we thought it would be good to inform them so that they don't say.
I didn't know.
I didn't know.
Now, where does snow fall in on this? Where does snow?
It's, it's their obligation.
Uh, you were, were you here for the snow conversation? We were just talking about having the village shovel all of our sidewalks.
Because that's a different, we're already going to investigate some, another solution. Okay. Yeah.
So.
Next one?
I don't know, so I mean, I, whatever, well, I guess we'll discuss it. I'm just thinking about like, okay, so the sidewalks are their responsibility the rest of the year, but for snow, it might be our responsibility.
Well, that's why I don't wanna add the snow there, cause it might be our responsibility, we might decide to do it.
I mean, and that, I think, well, there's two things. One is that sometimes vegetation that is in somebody's front yard
Right.
grows, overgrows into the sidewalk area. That, I believe, would, is very clearly the property owner's responsibility because the plant itself is on their property.
Sure.
Um, where if we're gonna talk about keeping sidewalks free of weeds and litter and things like that, I mean, you know, we're not having garbage pickers go around and like pick up bottles and, you know, things like, and cans and soda cups and pizza plates.
Right.
Um, because that's basically what there is, our streets.
Right.
But I don't know, you know, so, but, you know, I don't know.
Okay, we should, if we do, if we do this whole thing, we should include in the, um, notice that you can't have your trash cans on the sidewalk or any like serious garbage that's blocking sidewalk.
Yeah, that'll break down any of your trash cans right on the sidewalk very often when you walk through the street.
Yep. When I lived on North Chestnut, there's a lot, yeah, you might wanna add that in. Like, you're not allowed to block the sidewalks.
Head garbage cans.
No, we wanna remove the garbage cans from the sidewalk.
Well, that, that's a law, you're not supposed to leave them out on the curb. You're supposed to put them back in. Anyway, but the building inspector has not, I mean, that's not been enforced.
Yeah, no, I, I like call her when I see it and she usually calls people.
Parking meters at Village Hall, in other words, this lot out here, raised to fifty cents an hour with no maximum. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, now, here's.
We talking about this ladder all the way in front of the school?
This whole lot. At Village Hall.
Right, but I mean, do you continue in front of the school?
Not in, not in this particular item, that's later.
Okay, well, do you, and later, raise them all, you know? So I guess it's, the question is, if you've got a lot of students using it, do you care? Or just, everybody is the same and we're raising it for everybody and that's it?
Well, most of the time we have a problem with students parking here the very long term. Okay? We hope to settle that problem in a different way eventually. Okay, this is the big one, cause this is what Brian was asking about. We would like to create a long-term parking lot beyond that, the back of where the clerk's office is. And all the way along to where the town owns, I think, eight spaces from Flatako.
Okay.
We would like, and we've, we may get more, but we have counted several times and there are at least thirty-plus spaces there. And we would like to create a long-term parking lot there for employees and tenants who live on Main Street or any. Um, they would get first dibs. And it would be an annual thirty dollar, and we're not sure about the thirty dollars.
Right, TIC said that was very cheap.
They wanna, they thought it was cheap. Um, and it'll have a purple decal. Okay, and you can only park there if you have the purple decal. Otherwise, you get ticketed. Okay, the real question is, is thirty dollars too cheap? Like how much you pay?
Where is this exactly now behind here?
Yes.
Now, do our, our, our employees?
Our employees will have their own space, there is enough.
And we're not talking about that, this is something different than our own employees.
This is not our own employees, this is a long-term parking lot for people who work on Main Street and need to park. Tenants who live on Main Street and need a place to park. They get first dibs. And then, if there are still decals left over, we could, you know, the owner of the shop, you know, but the point is to provide a long-term parking lot for those people who do not have parking right now, who live on Main Street or are employed on Main Street.
Alright, so you wanna know why, how far underpriced I think thirty dollars is? Since we've already set, we've already set the value of parking down, it's worth fifty cents an hour. If you multiply that times eight hours a day, five days a week.
I know.
It comes out to a thousand dollars a year, so.
But we don't want to charge you that.
Some placement from a thousand and thirty then.
Wait, that's a long.
Just average it, four hundred dollars a year.
We want, part of this.
We wanna encourage people to purchase.
To use it and not, and not park on Main Street.
But, that is, it is, the market is that high.
On campus parking for students is sixty dollars a year, and on-campus parking for faculty, that is twenty dollars a year. So I think in terms of gauging it, that's more of a, a gauge of what we, you know, what is reasonable.
So, but why, but here's, but here's, and why would we reserve the spots when we could make a thousand dollars a year if we metered them?
Because I don't want, the whole point is not to have employees taking parking spaces, but to allow shoppers and people. Who are buying bagels, um, and getting coffee to be able to do so.
So why don't you do something to see if it works for a year, do it at fifteen dollars a quarter or something like that?
You could, or you could make it sixty dollars annual.
Well, the problem is that a lot of people won't be there annually, you know? Well, I mean, you know, tenants may not have the same year as that, and employees may not, they may come and go, so I mean, a quarter is probably more realistic.
Then you're talking about labor, and I don't want to. Take our employees' times, having to issue quarterly, I would prefer it be an annual fee. Or you could make it a six-month decal, but I think a year's decal would be fine at sixty dollars a decal.
What if you just make it a dollar for unlimited parking? Like a dollar for twenty-four hours' worth of parking? Because then, if you're like a tenant or something like that, or you work there, you can just drop in some change and then you're good.
Then you need to pay by machine.
Right, oh, cause you don't want machines.
I don't want machines.
We don't have machines there currently.
And decals are a lot cheaper.
That's true.
I, I think if your, your goal is to get this to work, get people to do it, then you may find if you choose a year. That's too long to get people started on, you may move towards that, maybe, you know, maybe six months of work, but.
Or a discounted, like a discounted year, but quarter, offer a quarterly.
Cause the idea is to show that you're progressive and you're having, you're giving your people a place to park and, and, you know, you can set it up fancy and it'd be the. Most logical thing you can do, but I don't know if the people will use it if it's for that long, I just have a feeling that.
Could do, would you say fifteen dollars a quarter?
Well, fifteen, twenty dollars a quarter.
Do twenty dollars a quarter or sixty dollars for the?
Employers may pay.
I, I definitely don't wanna do quarter, I'm, I'm open to half-year.
I, I gotta be honest, I, I hear complaints about people with things with the water bills or. Just like, kind of like administration type things, and to think about how. The level of complication that this might cause, um, just instituting it in another town, I think, bringing it into quarters is gonna be a.
I agree.
Chaos.
Really? It doesn't take much to print out stickers?
It takes time to sell them, to record who has them, and do that four times a year is quite.
I think it's like, I put my name on my water bill, X number of times, and they still are sending it to me under the form of a letter.
Right, but I mean.
Doesn't it also highlight that you're trying to do something to fix the parking problem?
Well, you buy a sticker, like, you know, we order the stickers, X number of stickers, thirty of each.
DBA has already offered to deliver. A little letter informing people of this availability and what it will cost, and. If Jason owns. A dairy bar downtown and he has five employees, he can come in and buy five stickers for his employees who worked for him. So let's not make this more complicated than it needs to be, I think we ought to try and do it, let's try it a year. And if we find people would rather have it biannually, then we'll do it, but let's not.
And if we find that it's working smoothly, then we can increase our, you know, ability to provide these things, but I think, you know. There's, there's a lot that goes on that people, you know, in the offices are dealing with, but I think like, you know, this is gonna be added.
As opposed to thirty?
My only objection would be, um, still wondering whether we make more money just metering it and providing the same need, but it doesn't seem like it's that much different.
Well, meter costs five hundred dollars in, in thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking about big bucks and then, I'd rather try the purple decal.
I would rather try it.
Okay.
I'm also gonna try to figure out if we can track which meters get us the most money.
That's.
See which ones are used more.
Okay, and then, you know, once we allow those people any extra, it's gonna be on a come, a first come, first served basis, so. We, and we'll know the number of spots we have and exactly how many.
Are you going to say an employer buys five stickers for his employees, are they gonna be to a particular car, or they can just pass them around any way they want? To anybody they want to use those five slots? Cause they use your.
It goes onto your car, how are you gonna pass it around?
Somebody who is worse there.
It's gonna be a sticker on your car.
Somebody who quits their job and still has their sticker.
Then they can come in.
They can come park.
No, the, the, um. We'll, we'll figure that out, but I think what we would do in that case, Ariana, is. We would ask the employer, they must take it off and bring a piece of it and replace, and then it will be replaced for the next employee. But we, that's a detail that we'll, I mean, I think we ought to get the lot done and tried. And we can do, fine-tuning.
How many spaces, do you think, was it, what am I, how many spaces are we talking about?
Thirty plus. Ariana and I were being very conservative and we counted thirty, but we believe with some careful thinking out with Blue and Nick, we're actually at one.
Thank you everyone, musical, thank you both.
Right next to that is going to be fifteen spaces for our own employee parking. And with appropriate signage, employee parking, and the license plate numbers will be provided to the parking enforcement officer. So he knows if a car doesn't belong there. Okay? Then, we want the parking spaces immediately in front of the south entrance of Village Hall, reserved for residents for village business. And we're gonna move the handy, if we can, Blue, Blue has a question about this, but we'd like to move the handicap parking space that's all the way at this end. Of the parking closer to the elevator.
Yeah.
Okay?
Just makes sense.
So that, I mean, what's the point of being handicapped, getting out of your car and having to walk the whole length of the building to get in the elevator?
Seems like it might be difficult.
Yeah, so wouldn't it be wiser to try and move it up?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And also, when we're shoveling snow, it won't get so blocked as it sometimes does. Okay, and then designate all parking spaces in front of Village Hall West Entrance, that's Katie's side. For village officials and for residents doing business, okay? And the question in my mind there is, Katie, do you think we need a handicap parking space? And we have one down there.
Yes.
Okay, so we're good.
Um, it's the further, it's the, there's, you know, five or six spaces and then the disabled person parking. And we need it because that's the only place in New Paltz where you can get a disabled person to have.
Right, now, is that close enough to the door, or should we move it? In front of the door?
We move it closest to wherever the ramp is.
I think you can, I think you can move it closest to there, that would be fine. Um, but I know it's ever complained to me that they thought it was a terrible, no one to date has ever complained.
No, you have had, or not?
No.
Oh, oh, then I wouldn't worry, okay.
And, and it worst came to worst there, on the occasion of the emergency, there was a major problem, we didn't run outside for them.
Alright. Now, the rest are all long-term on the next page, we've got, go to the. Page three-six, thank you for numbering, Katie. Okay, what do you want to do about alternate street parking? We have heard pros and cons on this, Joe did not spell out the streets because. We don't know what streets, and so I need. You know, you heard Mark tonight, we know that. That both Methodist and Episcopal Church are concerned. The, the Sunday services could be addressed by just say. You know, two-sided parking on Sundays, but that does not address the need that. Mark pointed out for Grove Street and the Methodist Church, which really does, I mean, I went and checked.
In the mornings too, Sally, they have, um, like the school, there's your school, and I mean, there's cars on both sides of the streets filling it up. So, I mean, I don't, you know, it's not really a, just like, you can't just like, okay, cool, class.
I, I'm not gonna ask this to decide tonight, cause, cause Joe is here to do zoning with us and we have other things to do. And I think we have enough that we can work with immediately.
Right, exactly.
But do think about this, because it really, I mean, Jason has pointed out prior, when we first talked about this. That, and many people commonly believe that if you are parking on both sides of the street, it slows traffic down. Good thing, bad thing. The major problem I see with the double-sided parking isn't so much with slowing down traffic. But a lot of people who live on those streets can't park there because everybody else has hogged all spaces. So, maybe what we should combine is a future idea that we proposed. And that is, if we're gonna do decal parking, just do it now and have resident decal parking. And we'll try and figure out the system that would work best for that, like two decals per house. You have to pay extra for extra decals, so if you have six people living in a house with six drivers, you get two for. Free. And you pay more for each additional one. So do you want us to explore that thought as a solution to alternate parking?
I mean, yeah, I definitely don't agree with the alternate side of the street parking, after hearing public comments and.
That there's been a lot.
Yeah, I feel like it doesn't, it, it's not gonna work, and plus, I mean, the main, if the main concern is plowing, you know, we tow cars if, if they're on the streets during plow time.
No, we don't.
Yeah. Not, not all the time, not everyone, we should probably, depends on.
Yeah, I mean, I've definitely seen a couple that should have been and weren't, but, I mean, my car, my car was towed when I was.
If we consistently enforce that policy, then you're right.
So, I think we should enforce it.
And, but who's going to enforce it?
Usually it's the DDW calls it into the tow company, but if it's a storm, they may be so busy getting people off the roads or doing that, the other, they may not get to a parked vehicle or whatever.
I think we have to take Blue's input, it might be the solution is, you know, to enforce that law. And then have the residential stickers, which would allow alternate street parking, but allow. People who live on those streets to be able to park. And, you know, I mean, there are lots of, I mean, I agree with you, we've heard a lot about anti-alternate street parking. But I also think we have to come up with a solution, because. Alternate street parking as it is right now is causing problems for people who live on those streets.
Well, there's another.
No, I have not heard that.
Hmm?
I have not heard that.
That was one of Richard Quigley's tweets.
There's another, um, this, this got worse with the law, I, I think it got worse with the law that the board passed in oh-two or oh-one, um, under Mayor Knapp was. The one that outlawed, um, made it illegal to park on anything but asphalt, so it used to be, I mean. It, it didn't, it didn't used to be illegal to park on, uh, your yard, basically. So you can park in the backyard, park in the front yard, put your car wherever you wanted to, a law was passed as a quality of life issue. But that meant now that, that say, a, a, a student house that had eight adults living in it, that was built for a family of four, has eight cars, his driver is not big enough. They either have to go on the road or go on, they used to be able to go on the grass. So that, we see that bottleneck when we have storms, where we tell people, we can't, we can't park on the streets at all, and that includes municipal parking lots. So where do all these cars go?
Yeah.
We're also telling you can't park in the yard, you have to park in the driveway, even though we know it's too small for that, you can't park in the street, you can't park in public areas.
Well, it was a mistake to ever allow.
There's pressure, pressure from a couple of different areas, if they're, we're gonna tell the cars they have to go somewhere else, they have to, there has to be some of them to go. And if we know the driveways can't contain them, and we know that it's not practical yet to ban them outright. I mean, it's a catch-22, I don't know. I don't have a particular carousel, but it just goes around circles.
We're trying to address some of that currently. Because it seems to me, if you build a house for eight people and you.
Now we can handle the new, the new construction, but we can't, the retrofits and the grandfather, they're all back.
That's the problem.
Right.
That's the problem.
But yeah, the reality is, when we pack people into housing the way we do in this village, and people use our cars.
But that is why.
And we don't have the money for public transportation to make it, uh, as a viable option for more people.
But that is why I think the decal system may in part solve this problem. You live on Harrington, you get two decals for two drivers in your household. If you live on Harrington and you have eight people in your household, you get two decals and you pay for six.
So what is, what is the paying due to how?
That, that allows, that person then would be able to stay on the street in that situation?
If they paid.
With the decal, if you don't have a decal and you're parked on the street, then we're gonna have to figure out what to deal with.
How, how does, how does having a decal and paying for parking change the constricted parking?
It doesn't change the number of spots that exist.
Right.
It, what it does is guarantee the people who live on that street the ability to park.
But it also, it doesn't, it doesn't, because you're just charging the people, so you're saying each house gets two spaces and then anyone else can pay extra, so let's say. Everyone on that street pays the extra money so they can park on the street, then you're in the exact same position as you are.
Except, how about this, you guys are neighbors.
Right.
Brian's having a party and all his guests are parked on the street, you come home, yes, you have a decal, but there's no spots available. Unless we're not gonna, anyone without a decal to park on the street, in which case, what happens when your granddaughter comes to visit?
This is why it is such a complicated topic.
Right, um, so I'm asking what your solution was.
I don't have one yet. Alternate street parking would have made it an even bigger problem, but we would have had to solve it.
There's a lot of things that, that aren't too logical, you, you take, um, Prospect Street on the end near Main Street, it's wide. And they have alternate side parking, and I think that the complaints of the people who live there are mostly not, cause they all have their own places to park and the drivers pretty much. Enough space for however many cars they need, but people park in front of the driveway and they can't get out.
Right.
That's their complaint, like someone said here, but then when you get to, to John Street, the street gets narrower. And there is an alternate side street, and they, and they say, well, there's nobody parking there, but if you drive down there, there is, so, you know, if you get a fire truck through there, you're pretty lucky. So that, that's a place that should be addressed, so it's gone backwards.
It, it's crazy. Okay.
Wait, I have one more question on your decal idea.
Yeah.
How would that work with people who live downtown? So for three years of an apartment that was built before cars at all, hundred percent lockovers, no driveway, no nothing. Would my, uh, Church Street, where actually in Kirkland, so but could, would my decal, so my decal means I could park at a meter spot where, on my street?
No.
Or I'd have to park on a side street, but now I'm not a resident of that street?
I've got, I've got a way that we can solve this right now.
Not do this.
Well, Katie just reminded that, uh, Jersey Shore does this, they have resident stickers, so that maybe the idea would be instead of us trying to reinvent the wheel. It is by other providers that already do this and figure out how they implement it there.
I know how they, yeah, and that may be the.
Well, yeah, it would be like a Cedar Beach thing, like, I, I'm trying the same thing, New Paltz resident.
You would say New Paltz resident. Village of New Paltz resident.
But, but, that's, the only problem is. that's, the only problem is it's not like we have a lot of, we do have, we do have a good amount of tourists, but I don't think the tourists in the neighborhood are the issues. I think it's that we have a high capacity of people living in houses with limited parking area. So I don't, I don't know if, you know, the the Jersey Shore uh Cedar Beach thing.
That would be, there's, I think we should find, we should call it the Jersey Shore.
No, but the people go to the Jersey Shore to like hit the bars or
No, the beach, not the bars at the Jersey Shore till nighttime where the sun has gone down.
Right.
You know, you know what the penalty to that would be? Would be the way the Minnewasht and Mohawk restrict their parking. That's including to the beach parking permit.
Right, yes.
To keep the resource
They have residence stickers, yeah, is what Katie's
So then we figure all of this out.
Yeah, we're gonna figure this out.
What I'm saying is that we should, we we can, we don't have to hash this out.
Should we just go to the Jersey Shore?
No.
Site visits?
A site visit, just, just for science, for science, research. Of course, even, that's where I'm from.
And the last three immediate
I mean, if we leave now, we'll be there by ten thirty.
Okay, everybody.
It's popping up.
The last three immediates. Jason and I have been talking about looking to get a grant on signage. And so that may solve, even though we have them as immediate, that may, we may be able to solve that in a different way. So don't worry about those immediately, okay? I think that Ariana and I have a good sense of what we want to do. Joe gave us very good legal terminology, so I can just translate what we agreed into his bill and then we will have.
Did, did we ever hear back from the D O T about those Grove and Oakwood street parking spaces?
I don't know.
Did we send a letter?
Oh, you won't know.
Did, did we, as part of this, decide we're gonna have a public input or hearing or what?
I think, I think we'll, I think we'll have to do a
session.
I think we're gonna have to do some sort of advertised, uh, public study changes coming.
You mean in terms of parking?
Yes.
Overall?
I think changing the meter, I think everything people need to be in the know before
Well, put it on the website.
Yeah, but maybe even, I think this might even warrant a little something in the newspaper.
Well, when we're ready for the first hearing, what we can do is say, this is a hearing on law enforcement, but there is also
Yes.
a time for you to share your views on things that we are going to do.
Yes.
Which don't require a law change.
Mm hmm.
We can handle it that way. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, what?
Do we have the copy for letters sent to the state?
Which letter sent is it on?
Uh, the request that
Parking on Main Street.
Oh, oh, that one.
Uh, no, I can, I can find out where it is. Yeah, either sent it or blue sent it, okay.
Okay.
And, and
Will you email?
Yeah, I just emailed the blue letter.
Speaking of letters sent to the New York State D O T, did you find any chance get a copy of the letter that we sent that the um bicycle deduction committee had requested of us? That's, that's okay. Because we got, we got a thank you from Bill that you asked me to read tonight. Um, dear Ariana, Brian, Jason, Sally and Stuart, the New Paltz Bicycle Deduction Committee has asked me to convey its gratitude for your support and authorize the mayor's to write up to Governor Cuomo and other officials to question why the draft two year New York State Department of Transportation capital budget does not include any apparent funding for bike head infrastructure. The town has also endorsed our concerns and sent the letter to the governor, New York State D O T Commissioner Joe McDonald, local state officials and all Alster County town supervisors, mayor and other major officials. The community does not and can never operate in a vacuum. We endeavor to provide both the village and town boards a vigilant high directed towards bike head concerns with the aim of bringing these concerns to your attention to appropriate action. Your support means a great deal to us and motivates us to marshal even more energy towards these issues. Yours sincerely, Bill Lock, City Chair of Bike Head.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I gotta bring a copy of the book. I'll make sure I get a copy in your mailbox for you and Phil.
Cool. Yeah, I guess I would like to act show with them. I really would like to.
You're most welcome.
Okay, um, well, I guess Joe, you have a few questions or comments about this.
The zoning ordinance, I, I think where you are here, I mean, what I would suggest you do, I think you're, you're ready to do it. Um, I mean, first of all, as far as comments go, um, I, as I've said before, I think you're at the stage now where you, you, you should start the formal comment period. In other words, we've been through this. There's nothing in here that hasn't been discussed and that the reason it looks different is that it's been pared down in previous drafts. For discussion purposes, I had put the thing in the context of the entire ordinance being modified just so people could kind of see what was staying the same, what was changing. Now what you've got is a pared down version, which just addresses this language is changing. This language is going in in this particular session. So I don't think really that, that that this board should engage in any lengthy discussion at this point on particular provisions. I think what you need to do is you should deem it a type one action under seeker, because it affects the entire village. So I think it is that.
We did not do that.
You did not do that. No, and that's, and that's fine. This is what I think you can do tonight. Deem it a type one action under seeker, authorize me to circulate it um, to involve the interested agencies. I don't expect anybody to say that they want to be the lead agency, but you should declare your intent to be the lead agency and authorize me to circulate that intent. Then there's a thirty day waiting period for people to object to that. Um, at the same time, I think you could set a public hearing tonight for let's say forty days out, you know, whatever that, wherever that falls, because that gives enough time for the lead agency status to have been circulated. Enough time for your local, your planning board to have provided you, which has already been referred to, I believe nineteenth. Um, which would be yesterday.
We're referring to the county.
Uh, yep, and so, I mean, that's what I, I would
We don't, we didn't set a public hearing date specifically because in case we got comments back sooner than the maximum time of the deadline,
Sure.
we could get it moving faster. Is there a reason to set it affirmed up? So we said in forty five days, but we get the comments back in twenty. We'll just sit around for twenty days waiting for the
I mean, it seems based on the track markers that we're not gonna get it back in twenty. So I, I think that we may as well just go for it.
It's an interesting point because I hadn't really, I was thinking about it more in terms of let's set the date so that it doesn't drag. And what you're saying is we might actually be able to move it faster if we actually got comments. The one thing I will say is the lead agency circulation period is affirmed. It doesn't, well, I guess if all the involved and interested, no, we have to wait thirty days. I suppose
No, no, if everyone waits.
If they all write back and affirmatively say, no, we're not interested. Uh, look, you may be right. We, we
I don't know. It doesn't matter. I guess is one of the questions.
Yeah.
Does it cost us anymore? Does it cost us like goodwill or time or something?
I would say this, uh, it, it might be my recommendation in that case that you set a date. And that if in fact you find yourself in that position where you've got recommendations back from everybody that you're waiting for, you've got a waiver of lead agency status from everybody, you can modify that date. You can move it up if you'd like. Um, but I mean, that's, look, the, it's an excellent point and the board can, I don't think the board, I like the idea of a date being set. Uh, but I don't think it's a problem if you think you might make up time by um
And it's, I mean, it's not like this law, I mean, is critical. It's not like shaving a couple of weeks off the schedule is really all the critical for this.
I think. Is it? Some of the things that you want to
Well, I guess it depends on what hits the planning board really, which we can't predict too.
Right.
Um, well, I mean, the other, the other, the other argument in terms of the flexible rather than the set is stone is that if it's, if we set it in stone and want to move it up, we will pay the cost to notice the same law twice.
That's true too.
The same hearing twice. So if they're keeping it flexible, at least we pay him once unless there's a good, I mean, there's a you seem like you like the idea of a set in stone.
I like the idea of it set in stone. And I also think that there's no point in moving it up. I mean, next week we have our public hearing on the, um, you know, interim zoning law. What difference does it make if these go into effect? You know,
Does that, but what's that affect?
When nobody's building anything in.
I wasn't completely following that. What's, what was the
Wait, next, next Wednesday, we have the public hearing on the interim zoning law.
Right.
So I see, I mean, since nobody is gonna be coming and building these things anyway, for the most part, I think like, you know, plus
Saving two weeks if we could, we might not.
Yeah, I, I don't think
That's a good point.
That is a good point.
Alright, so you could set, you're saying, set the date and let it sit there.
So what's the first meeting? Was it forty five days from tonight, you know? Forty five days from, no, because we're, we'll be declaring the agency's intent to lead agency.
Right.
It's already been referred, so it's something that our intent. And waiting is forty five days from, days from tonight. Yeah, we're, yeah, what, what's the, what's the
March twenty seventh, I was, I was thinking would be the first.
I just wanted, however the board wants to proceed at your will, I just want to preface that that that's Easter week and I don't know what anybody's intention is, but whatever the board wants to do.
Good, good, good call.
So is, yeah, sorry. I know, I know which Sunday changes. I got confused.
Why don't we say the first meeting in April?
Yeah, that, that'll do it for sure.
First meeting in April.
April tenth?
Sure. Is that all right with you?
Is that what it is, April tenth?
So Joe, what is it we have to move tonight?
So here's what you have to
Say what, say what the motion is and I'll move it.
Right. Um, let me see if there's anything else. Oh, it's set.
Questions that I want.
Public discussion.
Public.
But let's do this.
Mechanics.
Okay. Um, the proposal is to deem the proposed zoning amendments a type one action under seeker. Declare your intent to act as lead agency under seeker. Authorize circulation of your intent to act as lead agency to involved and interested agencies. And set the public hearing on the local law for April tenth.
So.
Second.
Discussion. Is that the question? We must we're discussing.
No, 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 I have questions on, not on this motion at all. I have some tightening up questions in the code itself.
Well, we should do that now.
You should do that before you
Before we move over.
Okay.
Well, we just, didn't we just, did we just vote?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's any amendments will go in now and then be amended.
I had so many pages of notes and so many different things. The only thing is that I wanted is do, you had thought we needed a definition of adult use.
No, I, I mentioned because it, it just so happened that one of our meetings coincided with an inquiry about adult use that raised some interest. Uh, my recollection and my own notes
Okay.
was that there was not a consensus that we needed to define it. Um, but I
What do you recommend?
It, you see, it depends on if you have intentions of um
Allowing it.
Yeah, of, 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 uh, a lot like, are there places you want to prohibit it and what kinds of uses would you want to prohibit?
Well, you know me, I prohibit it everywhere.
So for instance,
You knew that, both of them.
I know. I figured I would.
Right. And that's why it's not in there. I mean,
Okay.
Mark
That settles the question.
Right.
Adaptive reuse.
Okay, and the
But that's a very important one.
What is it, a word we need to find in the zoning code?
Yes, because adaptive reuse is a very different kettle of fish, right?
It, it is, but we don't use it anywhere else in our code.
It doesn't, it wouldn't refer to me.
Yeah, in other words, I think it's a concept worth exploring. And, you know, maybe as part of
Okay.
you know, but it's just, it it would be a definition that wasn't
Is there a law that, that, that governs adaptive reusing?
Exactly.
You don't use the
Alright. I'm good with all the other definitions, Joe, but I want to go back to the special use permit and just make a couple of observations.
I'm not being rude, by the way. I have it here.
There is no provision for ending it.
For ending?
In other words, the planning board keeps the constant review.
Right.
Either the building inspector can come back to the planning board and say, terms and conditions of the special use permit aren't being upheld.
Right.
Or a citizen can do it.
Right.
But there's nothing here when you go through the whole section of violations and that that says that the planning board may revoke it.
Um.
In other words, I'm sorry, but these violations are so severe, it is revoked. There's lots of chances to make good on.
Right.
There are opportunities to come back and prove you made good on it. But there's nothing that says I can take it away.
Right. I absolutely understand the comment. Um, I'll take, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time.
Yep, right, right. And there may be a legal reason you did this.
Well, and it may be somewhere not entirely obvious and I'll make, but I understand the concept, so we'll
And I do think there is one thing in the existing law that is missing here, I think. And that is that if you are not, have not used the space for the purposes for which you were granted the special use permit for six months, it automatically expires. And I think we need it automatically expires.
Okay.
Okay.
Any special, you know what it says now? It says one year.
Yeah, but I think it should be six months. Your one year is referring to a different concept, I believe.
I'll, I'll check.
The expiration, maybe it says six months.
Where's that, Ariana?
On your special use, I believe.
What does section
Section four. Special, maybe, maybe I'm looking in the wrong
I don't think so, Ariana. Four, because we have A and then numbers under.
Yeah, this is
Under section four, special
Planning board action, five expiration, and then it's little, little B after that.
A special use permit shall be deemed to authorize only that?
Yeah, especially if it's going to, and shall expire if the authorized special use shall cease for more than six months for any reason. I think what's, I, I mean, I agree with what Sally's saying and it should, there should be, it should be in the language that it's an automatic expiration.
Yeah, okay, I'll make sure that it's clear. Is that gonna be an issue with who's determining that and, and
The planning board determines.
Yeah, um, but is the planning board in space for six months? Like, let's say, you know, I own a restaurant or I own a roller skating rink. And I haven't been operating a roller skating rink, but then like, you know, one day within the six months or like for a week.
I have a birthday party.
I have a, I have a birthday party or we do a couples skate in there and then, you know.
Doesn't, it then, you've used it.
Okay.
If you are the owner.
So what I'm saying, but so who, so how are we determining that? Are we gonna, you know, am I gonna take photos of a couples skate and bring it in or you follow, you picking up on it?
It was just like my own personal, like, you know, me and, me and a couple of my couple friends.
Right. I will note the comment and I think that I, I remember that I, that I tried to address this by putting a procedure in there where the planning board does the initial review. And if the applicant believes, you know, that it's, that it's an improper determination, they go to the Z B A.
Yeah.
Because that puts it in the, in the context of an interpretation at that point where I think it belongs because the Z B A is a quasi judicial body, et cetera. It will never be perfect under a particular set of facts, but what it does do is put it in the right legal context so people know where to go and who to sue.
Right.
You know, and, and that's, I think, as good as we can do.
That's
But I'll take another look and make sure
And the only other thing is
That we want
Do we want an automatic five year renewal clause? In other words, you've got a special use permit, you've had it for five years, should you have to renew it?
I
And it's a question, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, look, I think you've got, there's a sensitivity here. And it's one of the things we're addressing with these changes by tightening up the special use process in general. And we've also certainly addressed, I mean, there was a flurry of activity, as you guys know, a year ago, where you guys did a great job adopting a whole bunch of laws in other contexts like site plan review and everything. There's a sensitivity to making sure that we're, we're getting a look at everything we should get a look at.
And being fair at the same time.
Exactly. I do think that at some point, if you write in just these constant, it has a real chilling effect, I think. if every business in town, every four years, has to, you know, put up a five thousand dollar escrow and go through a special permit and site plan review when they haven't even been found necessarily to do anything wrong.
Right, you're doing the right thing.
Okay.
So I, I, I worry about that kind of provision.
I know we had talked about.
We did talk about it and again, I think the consensus in that discussion, I do. Now, that is something.
Review every couple of years without it being something where somebody has to reevaluate.
Yeah, I think once you put them in the game, it's very easy to 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 just run up that process. You know, what, you know, you, when you give the reviewing board the hook, it's hard to get out of there. You know, I mean, it's just, it, you know, it can be four months in front of the board and you, and you didn't do anything right. You know, I mean, that, like, let's say all of a sudden now the board thinks or, you know, it'd be nice if your sign was eight feet back. I, I, I don't know, I mean, it just, it, I think it's a kettle of fish and I, and.
Okay.
But I will say this, I expect that's the kind of comment, we may hear that comment again. We may hear it from the planning board in their review, we may hear it from the public. So it is definitely something that was discussed and I, and I think we may hear it again and we should let that conversation be organic.
Well, that's why I went through all my notes trying to see if we covered everything.
And Joe, if if we do, if there are two or three changes
Right.
with all these things checked out, what does that do for us of all our declarations? Because it, we will have declared instead of hearing on the law, I mean, does it, do those set the threshold of substantive? Personally, do we need to redo all this if we need to change a lot of that?
The only thing you would potentially have to redo, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
It won't change anything about the secret determination because the secret, you've opened the secret process by that designation. And so now, I hate to use the word again, but now there's an organic process where if things change, they change, that's okay. But you are right that if, if we were to make changes that, and it would be at the discretion of the board whether there was such a fundamental change that you felt like, like, let's say, for instance, you held the public hearing. And after that point, as a result maybe of the public hearing, you made changes to the document that were really material, just like sort of a hundred and eighty degrees from where the original law was. We said it, we said we were gonna have no sunset provision, now we're gonna have a sunset provision, I don't know. If you determine that that's the kind of thing that in the interest of the public, they should hear again, you would set another public hearing. Um, and I would, of course, give you some guidance on that from a legal perspective, but it would largely be your determination. So not necessarily, and if it did reopen the issue, it would, it would require another public hearing.
What about these specific things that were just asked about here? Do we have to resolve those before we make these declarations?
No, because.
Give clarifications, I think.
Yeah, I, unless, if if you decided that any of the things that were just raised were things you wanted me to change before you even went forward with it, then I guess you you.
Well, that's, that's the question, if we want to include those things, do we have to change it before we set the, these hearings and stuff?
I don't think that the three items that were raised, the revocation of the special permit, for one thing, I think we determined that that was in there. The automatic expiration after six months, again, I think we found was in there. Who decides on the violation, again, I think we also addressed, I mean, I don't, I don't.
That's addressed.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think so is the answer to it, I don't think there's anything.
We already, whatever the law is that it's gonna, we're dealing with has covered all these points.
Correct, now whether or not during the process, those, those things change.
That's different.
Exactly, but they, they are addressed in the proposed ordinance.
The revocation is the, the biggest one and that is just finishing the process that is already done. Okay, in other words, I violate, I get caught, I have to do certain things, I violate, I get caught, I have to do certain things. The revoke, the revocation and who takes it is what is missing there. And that's just the fourth step in a step, a re-step process.
And again, I don't, I don't really, I don't.
He's not sure he agrees with me.
Yeah, I don't think it's missing, yeah, I think you, you and potentially others, as we go through the process, may want a different set of rules, but that should be part of the process.
For as complicated as this all was and as many people that had suggestions and ideas and everything else, I think you've done fabulous job.
Well, I appreciate that, I, I think the input was very strong, people, you know, it's obvious that certain people paid a lot of attention to it.
For not realizing you had gotten Katie's.
It's okay.
You know what none of us had.
Right, yeah, that's right, I guess she said, yeah, yeah, well, that, listen, that's fine.
But you did in fact, you incorporated it.
We gotta be accountable on those things, but I think I got, look, I expect we'll hear some thing. Undoubtedly, there are people who made a comment who feel like it's not in there and, and what I'll say, and since we are, it's a public meeting, I'll make clear. The, where choices have to be made to propose the local law. It, it's not a reflection of any comment not having been heard or registered, it's just, you, you know, at some point, if you've got three comments on a particular issue, you've got to try to find some good middle ground that's got a sound basis in law and then you propose it and then you, you let this process take place where, with all those same people will be able to make that comment again if they want.
But you have tightened up the special use permit tremendously.
I think it's a.
And the, the revocation is my only question
Right.
as a final step.
So, there was a motion in a second.
And where's the amendment, I believe?
It doesn't look like to me.
Okay, then, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Ariel, and I will, um, well, I guess we didn't take the break at nine, but since I think this could be long discussion, executive session, maybe five minutes resource, resource before going into executive session.
Absolutely, a resource, not a recess.
Five minutes, five minutes resource.
And I'm with you on that, right?
We're going to executive session.
And you're going to executive session with us?
I'm going, yes.
Should discuss contract negotiations?
You need to be the first to, you need to.
No, I think, unless anyone has anything.
Can't we adjourn ourselves and just tell her when we did so she doesn't have to stay?
Ask a lawyer.
Yes.
Can't we let Katie go home and?
If we're just gonna adjourn after executive session.
We're not gonna do any actions.
Yeah, I mean, you just need to be right about that. You know what I mean?
Well, if we send her home, we can't do anything.
Well, that's right.